Hello, everyone. Just like to bring everybody's attention that someone did come to me and say they are taping and recording the meetings. I'd just like you to let me know. We'll move down requisition board. You don't have any motion to approve expenditures for period ending March 31st?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All favor? Approval of motion to approve borough council amendments, March 6th?
The amended amendments.
Aggressed amended.
I was not here, so I don't know that.
I motion to approve the minutes from the March 6th meeting.
With the changes.
With the changes. I wasn't here either.
Okay, second? I second.
Unfortunately, Mr. President, you don't have...
I can second, Kelly.
No, you can second it, but it doesn't appear that you're going to be able to pass it with a majority because I reserve standing.
Oh, God. I try, I try.
Sorry. I'm sorry to have to sit on bottom.
Pretty sharp. It's our darn beard. So since we heard, anybody like to be, would like to come up and talk, name and address, and we give you four minutes, roughly. All right, Steve, there is any deferred business, parks and rectors deferred, new business, motion to adopt resolution 2019-4 endorsing expansion and construction of circuit trails. Steve, do you want to...
Yeah, this was Mayor Maxwell had sent this over. He'd been discussing it with some folks, but BBRPC has a long-range goal of instructing 180 miles of trails within the five counties. And Josh wanted to put this resolution on to support their efforts. So that's basically what it's all about. So...
This is already ready to go?
And they're called circuit trails, and I'm not very familiar with it, but it's a trail network will consist of a 750-mile trail network for nine counties. And that's what he is supporting. So he has the council supporting it.
Justin, to respect, thumb, thumb, pretend you don't see what you're saying.
I think maybe the only relative does it connects like the Chester Valley Trail, which we're already working on anyway, so it's part of that network.
Motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Motion, guys? No, I nearly forgot that Jeff Thomas and I are here. Gosh, thank you. Okay, motion to approve station taproom, Potterhouse anniversary, May 18th.
What year is this of this? I mean, is this the third time we've done this?
I think it's the third anniversary.
And everything's been great each time?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard of anything. I don't know if the chief has had any issues.
With no issues.
Let's make, make, make a motion to approve the contingent of all the paperwork and everything done with the chief. Do you have anything else, Quay, like Jackie?
Yes.
So all the approvals have done with, yeah, so...
Some move.
Second?
Second. Any questions? All right, all in favor? Okay, motion, Karen? Mac and cheese cook-off, beer party, motion to approve.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Again, chief, Jackie?
No problems.
Everything good? Good to go? Now I have a problem with that again. Good to go. Okay, any questions? Is all favor?
All in favor.
Okay, motion, Karen? Next, the way I understand it, we're going to have a brief presentation about Tressel Bridge Village. Correct? That's what's in here. Steve, this is...
Yeah, tonight...
Copy, you can take over.
I think Tressel View is going to talk to you a little bit about the development, give you an overview of that, and they're looking to possibly do an overlay district, which would be a zoning change. So I think their choices, I believe it's in the R3, is to either try and work with the R3 zoning or do an overlay district that would amend that zoning district, which would allow for certain, certain things of the development to take place, so they wouldn't need certain rules. So I think that's what they're going to talk about tonight. They did a brief presentation to the planning commission. I know our engineer, Matt, has taken a look at it. There's some questions about density and parking and things like that, but this is just the very beginning of the, of the process. They would need to change the zoning. That would have to come to you to approve that. They have to go through land development, just like any other process that comes through. So that's where we are tonight, and they're here to give you a brief overview.
Just real quickly, guys, if we don't change anything, the R3 zoning, they would have to come there and insist on that. They, they, they don't need our approval, like they would go to zoning changes and...
Unless they need any additional use, but yeah, I think they would probably want to start with the zoning hearing board, if they agree.
If they do, if we do an ordinance change, that's what they call the overlay, they'd have to go to land development and...
And you would have to approve that overlay district.
They would have to come to us, and we would get final approval on. So that's probably the two options we had. So we're not making any decisions, so we're just going to have a quick presentation, so you guys bring us up to speed. So... Where would you want us to say?
Maybe over there?
Sure. Bring him up, Francis, can you name the address?
Can you guys have it, because it's in the past.
Francis, before you start, your name, name and address.
Okay.
I'm going to put these on, Mr. President, just in case you guys want to see this additional for, you know... So as briefly as I can, but print, print, print.
Yes, sir.
Name and address.
Name is Francis Teraski, 304 Buck Road, Downingtown, Pennsylvania.
For the record, thank you, man.
Let me get this in a little closer.
So, in a lot, you can raise it up, move it to the... You want it like that, quickly, they can come up?
No, I'm good. Okay. Just want to make sure you can hear me clearly. So what we're proposing here is Tressel View Village, Johnson Town Neighborhood Revitalization Overlay District, redevelopment plan for Johnson Town. I'm going to give you a little bit of history about myself for anyone that doesn't know who I am. You've heard my name, Francis Teraski. I was born, raised, and lived most of my life in Johnson Town. My grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, cousins, all lived in Johnson Town. We have over a 100-year history in the Johnson Town neighborhood. I started doing custom in-field construction in my neighborhood in 1986, starting at 435 Prospect Avenue.
Francis?
Yes, sir.
We got a buzz on the mic. You're, you're probably just better off without it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll be loud. I own some of these parcels going back to 1985, starting with 214 Prospect Avenue, where I personally lived for almost 20 years. The properties were originally in an R4 and R5 zoning district, a high-density zoning district, which was changed in 1989, which I strongly opposed because I had properties in that area. I went before the planning commission in April of 192002 with a sketch plan of a, of a neighborhood coming off of Prospect Avenue and a cul-de-sac connecting Tolucho. And at that time, there was discussion about trying to improve the traffic flow in the neighborhood and to improve the overall makeup of the neighborhood. At that time, the premise was a revitalization. What can we do to improve this neighborhood? So I was urged to try and acquire 272 Prospect Avenue, which would give us the ability to connect Willow Street and bring it up through the property and bring it over and connect to Tolucho Drive and that neighborhood. So, to give you an idea, in order to do that, I had to build Mrs. Oxedine, who was formerly Mrs. Proctor, a new house, so she would have somewhere to build. I paid off her bills, some of the bills that she had, and I moved her into a brand-new house that I built on Bradford Avenue. It was a twin house. That took until 2008, and we all know that the bottom dropped out at that point. And things kind of sat stagnant. So we spent over 20 years investing resources in a Prospect Avenue area to help with the revitalization efforts of Johnson Town. And we did have some early discussions about some Koz opportunities in the past, but I think that's gone by. The borough of Downingtown is described in Chester County Landscape Street. The plan is a high-density urban center, as was the original intent when the borough was incorporated. The borough of Downingtown consists of 800 buildable acres in comparison to Newland Township with 6,650 acres. So we do not have land to waste. Approaching vision of Johnson Town Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, we have remained strongly committed through the years to the idea that something great can happen in Johnson Town, and this rare opportunity is finally here. We continue thinking in a creative way through the years as to what would have the most positive impact in the planning of this neighborhood and the benefits it would have in the Downingtown community. Our vision for this project is to provide a tightly community that interacts in the borough, utilizing parks, restaurants, and clubs, a vision of connectivity with an integrated design that offers sidewalks, trails into the neighborhood. We're proposing, we're seeking to create the neighborhood as an overlay district, a redevelopment approach to this neighborhood, which has been under-discussing and proposed. And I think it went back, as far back as when Glenn Deal was a solicitor. This, we are proposing an overlay district similar to Green Street with 20 units per acre, Main Street, Kennedy Drive, Woodbine, and other various projects that have taken place in the borough. This project will add great value in a section of the borough that has lagged behind the revitalization that has been occurring in every other part of the borough. The projected values of existing homes in the neighborhood are expected to increase substantially as this project moves forward. The unit sizes will be about 2,200 square feet, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, one-car garage, two off-street parking spaces per unit. We will need the number of units proposed in order to make the project viable and attractive, in order to kick-start this revitalization effort. Engineering consists of 79 units, the Boulevard entrance, exiting onto Willow, and also three different options for exits. Private streets and homeowners association and a provision for future Chester Valley Trail access have been incorporated into this plan. The project lays out very well on this property. It fits perfectly as designed. This is about the 10th sketch revision that we've done to try to bring this thing to where it is now. So, at this point, this is the project. This is what we're talking about. This is Prospect Avenue going down Bradford. This is Willow Street. And then, turn around here, this is our Boulevard entrance. It ties into Tolucho. It's a connecting street. This street ties into Keene. As you can see, you can exit on the Willow, go up Prospect, go down Prospect. Gives you a lot of options. It gives good street flow. One-way street helps with that flow going down. You come out this way, you can go up, or you can go down and go on Turb Street. So it, it works very well as it's laid out. I have some elevation concepts in the front here. And we have a little bit of a street scape here, showing the buildings. This is the one looking up, connecting to Tolucho. From the next to street down here, it, Keene. That's the presentations for council. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Yeah?
Visitor parking would go where?
Visitor parking is this lot here, visitor parking. There's visitor parking here, visitor parking here, and visitor parking here.
And how much open space is that?
At this point, I'd have to refer to Andy.
There's 31.76 percent. Andy, for the record, name and maybe... I'm sorry, Andy Everwine, the engineer for the project from Edward B. Watson Associates.
Thank you.
And that can be used by the community for...
Yes. Yeah, and this is the trail, connecting trail that will get us to the future Chester Valley Trail, coming right into the neighborhood here off Tolucho. So the neighborhood, and then there'll be sidewalks on Prospect. We talked about with the planning commission, possible sidewalks down Willow, which doesn't have a sidewalk now.
Kelly, have anything?
I'm just curious, any idea what you might be thinking about price-wise?
Price-wise, we will be in the upper 200s, below 300s.
Is there other plans? You can take the... Phil?
No, I mean, other than the planning, the planning recommendation, or what we've said so far.
I hear you say two off-street spaces per unit?
Yes, plus the garage.
Where are the off-street spaces?
Right in front of the buildings.
On, on the street?
No, no, nothing on the street.
They're stacked that far back that you can stack two of them up?
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're not stacked in, they're side by side.
Can you show the picture again, go back to the photo?
Which one do you want to... It doesn't matter. Each one of these units will have a one-car garage and a parking space next to that, which would meet township's ordinance size for, for parking, behind the sidewalk, and then the driveway in front of the garage. So they won't overhang it on the side? They won't overhang the sidewalk. Now, all the units will be set back 20 feet from the back sidewalk. So there'll be a 20-foot or an 18-foot parking space. There would be an extra two foot to the unit, so there'd be a walkway. So you come in there as a driveway. Go back, go back to this one.
So there's essentially two spaces per driveway?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that's what you meant?
Yes, yes. And then the overflow parking is scattered throughout, so that if you have guests, there's a place for them to park. We would be restricting parking on the street. We're not proposing any parking on the street. I don't think it would be wide enough for that to happen. And, you know, any other developments, it's not like Prospect or some of the other streets in the world where you can park. These are going to be restricted from being parked on. All the parking will be in front of the units and the other extra parking area. So you're, you're 20 feet in front of the garage. Flip it back over. How far in front of the door? You lose, it's 18 in front of the door? You're 18 in front of the door, so there's two foot. If that's where you lose the two foot, so 18, so... Yes. Matt, that's right, the requirement we have. Your parking space is...
What's the normal, what do you think?
18. 18 is minimum.
Width?
Yeah.
Width?
None.
And that's all big. Nine feet, nine by 18 spacing. What's, what was the total? You'll have driveway nine feet, you'll have a parking space of nine feet, so 18, and then you'll have 18-foot of parking. Flip it back over, if that's hard to see, the other way. The other way should be actual, right. That's a little... So there's, there's, oh, that's, yeah, that's a little bit difficult. Can you see my, my, yeah, garage is, there'll be a nine-foot driveway into the garage, and then there's a nine-by, nine-by-18 parking space next to that drive. So the driveway will be nine by 20, and the parking space next will be nine by 18.
Yeah, it looks like you have 24 visitor parking spaces?
Yes.
Did you base that off of the number of houses and how, how would you, how did you come to that?
We've tried to put as many as we could within the areas that were left, were left there. Your ordinance doesn't really have a specification as to how many we have, and because we have two per, we're about a third of the units having extra space. So there's no magic to it, it's just what was left. It's not two and a half, Matt?
No. It's two.
Two?
So, I, I mean...
I'm sorry, Matt.
I guess theoretically, they...
They give your name, so...
Matt Bush from Dan Martin here.
Thank you.
You know, they'll have one space in the garage, and then you could effectively park two spaces, you know, two cars in the driveway. I mean, we all know that doesn't really...
Well, you can't because you have trash cans, you have all that stuff. So when we put the trash can, put the trash cans outside, you can't get like cars.
Steve said he wanted the building's design so that the trash cans fit in the garage.
Yes.
Yeah, we've already talked about that.
Yes, that's what he's saying. He's saying, yeah, next response, technically, we don't.
It should kind of be two for you.
Yes.
I think that's what I mentioned.
Sure. Alex, you can think for a minute. Phil, you have another question?
Yeah, one of the concerns of the planning commission was the fact that the houses that border Prospect face inwards, and the houses that are going to stay on Prospect are going to be looking at the backs of the new houses. You guys said that you couldn't, can you explain to me again why that has to be that way?
Well, in order for us to, to flip these houses so that the front is on Prospect, we would have to then put the garages in the back. The garages would then be on the internal street or providing alley and flip the other side. When this site's grading, if you look at the topography on the property from Prospect to the back, we have about an average grade of about 8% climbing up the hill. When I start getting into situations where I have to put rear garages, alleys, rear garages, houses, streets, I start having to add 18 to 20 feet of flat area. It's very, very difficult, if not impossible, to make the grades up on my streets for any kind of reasonable slopes. So we looked at that, but for this piece of land, because it's not flat, it's very difficult to do that. So from a constructability standpoint, we'd be increasing in coverage, chasing grade and fighting grade the whole way. And when we first met with Steve, and he had a concern, and we're talking about, wouldn't there be walls up along the railroad property in back of these units? And Steve, Steve's always expressed a concern, he didn't like that, and I agree with him. There are not going to be walls, we don't need them. This grade's in without walls, roads are trying to be as close as you can to your ordinance, as we have a couple areas of 10% in from here, but our level areas meet your codes, so we can, we can make this work safely. Provide level areas at the stop control intersections, provide, you know, safety within the development. If I have shorter runs and I have an alley, I have to go really steep to get to that out, so I'm going up and down. It's really, a piece of land that has this much relief doesn't work with rear alleys, and that's why we ended up with the design.
What about, what stormwater, what's your stormwater management? I can briefly describe.
We did some testing. We went out here and did some infiltration testing, some soil testing. We'll be providing for underground infiltration facilities in rear of these units. Another reason why we need to create spaces, provide that, they'll be underground. There'll be an underground potential facility over here, and we think we have adequate capacity to take care of that. Also, as part of this process, I think my client has agreed to fix and change and alter the facing down. The old twin house development down here, it's a hole in the ground.
With the monument.
We're going to, that's not going to take stormwater from this project, but that'll be repaired. So we'll design that to be underground, filled in, so it's a usable space as opposed to a really deep-plunging bowl. A big hole in there, is it?
Yeah.
So... It ran out like a cliff, guys, it's awful. Our, our concepts and our ideas are that we're going to be putting it underground, taking care of infiltration, meeting the, you know, BNP requirements that way, and your stormwater requirements. You're going to meet all the water requirements. We're not asking, we have, we have no choice. Have no choice on that. And now to make sure I get that. This is probably, I, I saw plans early on. Early on with bed-end streets, there was, and they actually went out and acquired more properties to make the thing flow, which it just didn't flow before. There was bed ends for trash trucks and all that. But it looks like on Prospect, you're, you're going to, you're going to over-landscape, correct? Looks like you're going to put nice-minded trees and make it really dense there, so it's really attractive on Prospect.
That's the plan, yes. Yes, and along the entire border of the, of the project.
Yeah, whole border. Phil was going about the backs looking, you're, you're more or less going to look at some decent-sized trees and all that stuff that's going to really make it, make it go in.
Yeah, and sidewalk. Sidewalk will be there as well. It's not drawn into this plan yet, but it will be.
Lighten through the whole project, right?
Yes.
That's going to be the, the street.
Yes, and that's...
I think the down Prospect Avenue is going to be...
Well, we haven't discussed Prospect Avenue yet, but this is the internal lighting that we showed as a concept. I don't know if you can see that.
I think if you want to do the project, probably, I would imagine Prospect would take those lights to... That's what we've been doing all through town, making, getting them as we can, because I hope it's going to have all, all the ornament and light fixtures. I think that, that may be, may be the path. Well, Francis is showing them on the rendering, and I think that, you know, the borough's, all the new lights within the borough are in that... Yes. The dome and the degree. As we said, you were talking Prospect Avenue too, the whole deal.
Well, yeah, and I guess we'll have to move, move to that point.
How many style homes are you planning?
Right now, we have one, two, three styles.
Three, and they vary price-wise in footage style, size, or...
They're going to be pretty much very similar.
So just the front?
Footage, yeah, just the front will change.
They're, they're partial basement?
Yeah, full base. There should be full basements, so, most of the case. Yeah, depending on how they grade out.
There'll be a partial basement on the upside, where you're pulling into the garage level. Are they not all, they're, they go all out of garages? They do, but these garages, these are all showing that, some of the garages will be on the second floor, and your basement will be low down. So as you go up and down the hill, it's a different look. I can put you down, so when you're looking at... Well... You looking that way? This is a daylight basement, so it's a walkout basement. So the garage is on this first floor, and then it'll be a level above that. These are driving a lot into the basement, and there's no, it goes out, and it'll go up. So the backs of these units, the basement, will just have windows. Yeah, some of them, let's say, have crisscrossed in the building. It's crazy. Good. And this is early on, guys. Any, I mean, one of the chance asked questions. Any more questions? Matt, you have anything to bring our attention and let us know, any concerns or anything you have at this point? We got to go up some later on, but...
Yeah, I mean, you brought up, you know, one of the planning commission's concerns was, you know, the sidewalk along Prospect, you know, and making that meet the borough standards. We had some discussions about planning commission, about how wide the sidewalk should be. I mean, that can be addressed later. We talked about extending it out to the west potentially, just to make the sidewalk in that area continuous, because there's some holes. And that's about, but that's something we can, we can look at later.
And, and, and that Prospect Avenue, as Bill said, was a concern, so we don't want to come in and put in major trees there, they're 30 years to grow.
in and put in, maybe to treat their, their 30 years to grow. But we will find out what the, what the requirement or what size stock we're going to put in their mass so we know that they meet those specifications, that's what we do, approve it and get the changes. But we could talk about that later on, but if you could just make a guess, what are our concerns, the size of trees and what company? Anybody else have any more questions at this point?
At this point, no.
All right, guys, we appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing, have you decided, are you going to build it?
We haven't made that decision.
Stop some of that, there's still more to be built there.
We'll probably, we haven't reached that final decision, conclusion yet.
Mr. President, I'm John Jeros, I'm Mr. Teraskey's Land Use Counsel. I just wanted to put it in perspective, Mr. Solins kind of referenced it earlier, is that this is a sketch plan. And obviously, the next step is for Mr. Teraskey to direct me, put some type of ordinance together that would provide for that development on that property as you see it this evening. So we're just kind of looking for, we're not asking for anyone to sign on the dotted line, but we're looking for a consensus from Borough Council to move forward, and that would be the next step. I would draft something and submit it to Mr. O'Keefe and your staff.
I don't know about the consensus if they want to do it. I didn't hear anybody object.
That's all we're, that's all we're looking for.
I didn't hear anybody show vocal concerns. They will have a lot more questions down the road.
Absolutely.
But it did seem like anybody was, you know, really hobbling their tails saying, get out of here, so.
That's all we're looking for.
They can start designing.
Start what they want. Yeah, I'll say, we have two council members going here, they'll, I'm sure they'll have some questions.
Understood.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions now or not?
Usually we bring it, this is just an update. Y'all plenty of chances to do and go through the regulatory developments, okay? Thank you. Okay. Matthew Cheese. Steve, you're going to bring us up with, let us know about this potential cell phone tower. You guys got that in here?
It was brought to our attention that there is an application, a potential.
There's a public notice, we got, I got some email here today. But we got an email about the installation of cell towers on First Financial Bank. As you know, there's no cell tower there now. And there is a public comment here, and it's 30 days, so, I mean, you know, they have the cell towers on the station back there, and they do not look very pleasant. So, I mean, I don't have any idea of what they want to put up, but if you authorize me, I can kind of give you a tour and get some more information. I mean, we do have a 30-day window, so I want to make sure that we get any comments. We have, I just don't know how to look and.
What's the first one answer, which bank is that?
I'm sorry, it's, I don't know, E Bank, the Roberts Building.
Crossmont Memorial, 3014.
Yeah, I still call it First.
You know, and guys, they could stick them back, they'll put them on the corner, we might have some options that way. Jimmy, are they allowed, are they allowed in historical districts? Jimmy, what do we ever do? Do we ever do anything for the historical district to try to keep them?
I think we would like to review that.
Yeah.
I'm saying, we didn't, we never put anything over the books. Yes.
Absolutely not.
We don't have anything, we don't have, they don't have to give us anything, do we? Max, what, what?
We couldn't do it with the park.
What, can we get them to do, what can we require them? Can we slow it down, look at everything, make our suggestions? I know we've got 30 days, but we don't have any time.
I'm going to have to take a closer look at this because I, this is my first hearing of it. Depending on the nature of the antenna, it's going to depend on what authority the borough has to regulate these things. When you have facilities that are public utilities for entities that are also federally regulated, you come to a strange intersection as to what locally you municipalities can and cannot do. So without knowing more about it, I'm not sure I can give you a comprehensive answer, but I can certainly circle back to Steve, look into maybe some of the nuts and bolts and maybe guys can answer.
But there are, and we have a lot of leeway on it, it doesn't mean that they have other options that they can bring them to. It doesn't mean that they have a right by use to go there.
Well, I don't know, we've been in this situation before where we didn't have control of it because it is a federally regulated utility. So the only thing we had was building permits to make sure they were installed properly. So the date on this was 3/13, so that puts us at 4/13 to provide comments. So I don't know if we can get in touch with them and have a, some type of rendering of what this, if it's a monopole, it's not bad. If it's a regular cell tower, that's, that's, that's really visible, so.
And that's one of the higher towers, and, you know, like in U-Dad close to the city, they started nagging them all the way around. Can you see how they just start to, I'm, I'm sorry, have you got a comment?
One other concern is with the way we currently do parking and that side of town with those antennas, it does interfere with the machines and the receptability of those. So it'd also caution you of that if you're looking to do, updating infrastructure down there as far as parking and the meters that we currently have, that would be a concern on mine.
We could, right, we could push and make that known, tell them that they would have to address it. All right, I, I, I think it's council's thing to let Steve proceed and see who, what, when, where, and why, where he can make comments over, trying to see what's wrong.
Well, I'm hearing that he has 10 days to make comments?
Well, I think, I think maybe we, maybe we send some type of correspondent to say, at this point, without the proper information in the historic district, we would be opposed depending on construction. And that way, at least we get our comment in there and maybe we, then we have more time.
And, and/or ask for the land construction and approval so we can have time to look at it. Does that sound reasonable, Max?
Yes.
Okay, guys?
Really?
All right?
I'll try to get some out tomorrow then to them.
Yeah, Max can get some, good quick. All right, guys, any other comments on that? Will you go with it, everybody? Just go with that?
And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Appreciate it, Steve. All righty, any sort of orders?
Absolutely.
Are we meeting?
No, of course not. My sort of orders, we're not going to meet till May 1st either. All the big, all the big developments have written along, Steve's told.
The only thing I have is, we're having an birthday celebration over there in the curb park by the gazebo on Sunday, April 28th, from 1:00 to 4:00. Hill Beer Garden, sorry, a paddle event, a band named The Younger Set will be there called Ants On A Log, and there'll be vendors and people talking about ways we can save the plan.
I cannot.
Phil, Log House is open on Sunday, 1:00 to 4:00.
And I've been informed by that lady back there that the Log House will be open this weekend from 1:00 to 4:00. We're back in business, like, spring kind of came up on me, Jimmy, sorry.
Thank you, Regina, for that call.
Could I, first of all, the news that I came out, thank you, thank you for keeping that going. Can I get an update on how many people are subscribed?
I can, it's quite a few. Yeah, our new website, we're looking to go live, I think, by May 1st. So there is a lot of info, we're just trying to look, but, yeah, I'll get that information.
It's never done, just a curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
May 1st, guys, make another.
May day, may day.
If you're not going to go, please, please let us know. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, thank you everyone for coming. May 1st, very good meeting, guys.